We're about to resume the budget hearings. And I'm Helen Holton from the 8th District, Chair of the Budget Appropriations Committee. I'm joined this afternoon, my left, your right, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, from the 6th District, member of the committee; Councilwoman Ed Riesinger, from the 10th District, member of the committee; Councilwoman Rochelle Ricky Spector, from the 5th District; Councilwoman Eric Costello, from the 11th District, member of the committee. To my right, your left, Ms. Kara Kunst, from the President's Office; and shortly beside me will be Ms. Marguerite Murray, from the Office of Council Services staff to this committee. Good afternoon. How are you, Mr. Mullen?
I am well, Councilwoman. Thank you very much.
You may go ahead through your presentation, and then we will go straight into questions.
Thank you very much, honorable members of the council. Actually, today, I brought with me, just quickly, I want to introduce some of my senior team. I have our Chief Fiscal Officer, Mark Cherry; my deputy, Yvette Monroe; my call center director, Lisa Allen; and my infrastructure director is Martin Okumu. A few other key members of our staff is our Chief Information Security Officer, Gail Guilford. She's actually at a conference, at her own expense, for security. And then we have our Director of Applications, Victor Ischola, he's also busy working. So, today, and I'll allow you guys certainly to read through the material as I go through it, I won't read it to you, but I want to talk a little bit about MOIT. At a high level, you know, our responsibility is to provide technology leadership, and partnership, and support to our agencies and the city at large. And we do this through governance, through engaging the citizens, through implementing new technologies, understanding what the businesses want, and finding technologies that we can apply to meet their needs. So, with that said, I'd like to talk a little bit about where we are as an organization. We're in the process of doing a restructuring. You know, our budget, relatively speaking, has remained flat. We're looking at a proposed budget of about $28 million. And I'll talk a little bit about why there's such a reduction later, from where we were last year. But we have a proposed recommended amount of FTEs at $117. And again, that's a reduction from where we were, and I'll talk about that in a bit. But what I've been trying to do with a relatively flat budget, and the fiscal constraints that we have, is try to meet the needs, the technology needs of the agencies. But I have to be very creative and innovative about how I do that. And so, one of the things that we've been doing is looking at an organization, and trying to establish how we can become more efficient as an organization. So, with that said, I want to start with the first slide, which is Administration. You'll see there's a slight uptick in the proposed amount from where we were last year. And one of the reasons for that is because we added some additional fiscal staff. In order for us to become more efficient, we determined we had to do a deep dive into our finances, and understand what our costs are. Whether it's how much a unit of storage costs, how much a mailbox costs, we have to understand those, and understand what our services are, to become more efficient. So, one of the reasons why, again, you know, we've added to that amount, is for that reason. And then additionally, we've looked at the skillsets that are required in administration. A lot of times, administration is an afterthought. It's, they just think they're looked at as pushing paper and so forth. But we've gone beyond that, in terms of what my expectation is, out of my administrative area. As we start to explore new technologies, such as cloud, and mobility, and having contracts with different vendors, it's very important that we protect the city's best interests by analyzing these contracts, and looking at what we're getting into, and making sure that there isn't vendor lock-in, those kinds of things, that could impact our organization at a later date. So, you know, I thought it was very important to make an investment into our Administration Department. And our recommended amount for this, for FY '17, is going to be $1.5 million approximately. The next slide, please. Is there...oh, no, I don't. Oh, is it? Okay. Then I guess I'm talking to myself. There we go. All right. So, Service Area 803, Enterprise Innovation and Application Services. The recommended budget is $6.8 million. And one thing I wanted to mention about this area, that area houses our PMO. And it's been very important for us to focus on project management, so that the projects that we have, and implementations that we have, are, we have better success rates with those. The city has been challenged around project management for some period, IT project management for some period. So, you know, we've taken this opportunity for the last year to build up that service area. And in fact, another critical resource that we have in that area is our Chief Program Management Officer, who's actually not here today. I guess he's working as well. But in any event, that's also a priority area for us. We've had a lot of projects in the past where we wind up spending a lot more than what was budgeted, and our success rates haven't been exactly what we'd like to see. And that's as a city as a whole, and that's not just our agency. So, part of our responsibility is to do what we can to address that, and that's by having a strong project management office. Another area that's housed within our Enterprise Innovation area is our data management practice. And that's, I think, as most of you know, is very important. As we start to look at business intelligence, as we look at doing analysis, predictive analytics, it's very important that we have governance, and we have a strong data management team. Also, open data is pretty important. Our citizens expect transparency within the government, and through technology, we've been able to enable visibility into, you know, our data, how we operate here, how we're performing here. And actually, we've been a partner with the Budget Office to display that information in many different ways. Another area in our Enterprise Innovation area is our GIS department. And as we start to look at this data, and this data says, one of the ways represented is geospatially, through GIS. That's one of the expectations that citizens have, when they want to know what's going on in their neighborhoods. Going to our GIS site, and a lot of the different applications that we have in that area is very helpful in citizens' understanding many different data metrics around their areas. So, the next slide is our 311 call center. So, earlier, you know, I mentioned there was a reduction in our budget, roughly about $14 million, as well as a reduction in our staff. There was a transition of one of our major services in the 311 area, actually, in our call center, and that was the emergency dispatch operators and our 911 call takers. You know, for a number of reasons, including strategically, in making sense for them to be under a public safety entity, we moved those services to the Fire Department and the Police Department, respectively. And actually, those are still in process. I think the operationally, both units are being run by those areas. And we're still working through some of the administrative issues or challenges behind that, but by the next fiscal year, everything should be transitioned, hopefully. That's what we're working toward. But in addition to the transition, another important item to note is that we are upgrading our customer relationship management system, or citizen relationship management system. And that will give us the opportunity to be able to engage our citizens in a better way, for us to track our tickets that come in from our citizens, closed will finally mean closed. So, it's, as we modernize our environment, having these types of upgrades in our various areas will allow us to provide better services, and allow us to engage our citizens better, and give them better information. So, lastly, our Service Area 805, that's IT Infrastructure Support Service. That area houses our service desk, our network and server support. And it also houses our information security area. And you know, that's a very critical service that we provide. That's, you know, when you call into the service desk, that's the area that you're going to hit for our infrastructure, our network, our bandwidth, connecting to the Internet. All those things are managed and operated out of our infrastructure support area. So, our proposed budget for that is $14.3 million. Included in that is the support of our 800-megahertz system, which is relied upon, of course, by our police and Fire Departments. And then also, that number reflects our PC refresh program, which basically allows us to upgrade all of the PCs across the enterprise. I think many of you have already received new computers, and we're still in the process of doing that across all of our agencies. You know, with that, there's a four-year refresh cycle, so that's something that's been working pretty successfully, to allow us to upgrade technology across our entire So, with that, just a couple more things I think I'd like to point out. In addition to providing support to agencies, and partnership with agencies, I also feel like it's very important, or we as an organization feel like it's very important, for citizen engagement, and doing that in a way that takes us out of our offices and into the communities. And we've been working closely with other entities as well, such as schools, we've been working with housing, to connect for broadband initiatives, we've been doing hackathons, which provides opportunities for our citizens to come in and solve governmental problems. So, one of the things that we realized, with some of the constraints that we have, is that, you know, it's important that we develop partnerships with the community, and that we leverage a very robust tech community to help move some of our initiatives forward. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you. I'd like to say we've been joined by Councilman Kern, from the 3rd District, and Council President Young. And we will begin with Council President Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just have one question. Are we in the 21st century with our system here in Baltimore City?
We are working on getting there.
Yes, or no? Yes, or no?
No.
Okay. Mr. Klein, we are a city that's on the move, a city that I believe is on the right track. And for us to be behind the eight ball, as it relates to technology, is totally unacceptable. I want to know what your Finance Department is going to try to do, to make sure that Moet get the money that they need to move us into the 21st century. Half the time, you hear my colleague talking about reporting, and having stuff online. We can't get stuff up online and running if we have a system that's not capable of handling, you know, the load that we have here in Baltimore. We get ready to get some younger council people, not that it's any disparity to the older ones that we have here, including myself. I'm very technology-wise myself. My son-in-law teaches me a lot of stuff, and plus, I teach myself about the technology, and it's growing influence globally, so I have to keep up on those things. But we need to make sure that they have the money in their budget, so that they can take us to the 21st century, and get us out of the 20th century. We just had a long debate, and a long fight, over telephones, that was going to put us where we need to be. Finally, we have reached an agreement with the administration that constantly fights when we try to do things that we feel is going to move us forward. So, it's no different than it was with the telephone system, that purchasing recommended, that the vendor get it, so, you know, we lost millions of dollars. If we give our Moet Department the tools and the resources, we can make government more transparent, and we can have more efficient, transparent and efficient, and we can do our work more quicker, because our computers are slow, and they go down on us quite often. So, Mr. Klein, I'm asking that you look into how we're going to be able to fully fund Moet. I know that budget, I know the Finance Department, last year, I think they, $5 million to upgrade your technology over in the Budget Office. And, you know, I had a problem with that, but it happened. We want the same thing to happen for Moet. They need the money. So, find the money, so that they can have a 21st century department over there. Thank you.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mullen, last year, we talked about the CSR, the Motorola CSR system for 311. We talked about upgrades that your agency was in the process of making, including rolling out a mobile app for city employees. Can you talk about the status of that?
With regard to the RFP, and the process of upgrading our Motorola system, as I indicated earlier, actually, we've made significant progress with that. We've done an RFP, we've already received bids back, we're going through the evaluation process now, we're pretty close to picking a vendor. We're looking at implementation, ideally, in the fall. So, again, I'm very excited that we've made a lot of progress since last year. And again, this will give us an opportunity to be able to engage our citizens better, to be able to track our tickets better, to be more efficient in how we're doing that, to provide better information, to have a modern technology platform that allows mobility, and like, from application perspective, in terms of what you're talking about. So, again, we have made progress. By fall, we should be looking at implementing our system. And again, we'd be looking at cloud-based systems, so the capital costs will be minimized. We'll see if, ultimately, we're hoping for a reduction in overall annual costs as well. So, better technology at a lesser cost, that's part of what our mission is. I'm trying to do more with less, and I think we have an opportunity to do that. As far as a app for citizens' employees, we have the, from a citizen perspective, you know, we do have the 311 application now. Certainly, there are enhancements that can go along with that. And as we continue to modernize our environment, and upgrade to this new system, we'll be able to add, or either switch to another application that has increased capability and functionality. From a employee perspective, a lot of that has to do with having a better understanding of our application environment. So, one of the things that we've been doing is going through the agencies to understand what applications agencies are using, as we modernize our portfolio, how they're being used, are there opportunities to minimize our application portfolio, like, for example, we may have like 200 applications in the enterprise, what are they all doing, how are they working, how are they being supported? And are they applications that are customized, or developed internally, or are they applications that could be in the cloud, or from a COT system? So, what we want to do is reduce that number. And I'm explaining all this to say, because that gets us, with that strategy, it gets us to a point where we can have an application that's simplified, that understands the businesses, each agency's business, and then can have something that's meaningful, that employee can use to get access to their information, or do their jobs, whether it's out in the field, or whether it's wherever they are. So, to that end, we're not there yet, but the first step in that is modernizing our application portfolio.
Got it. Is one of the, is one of the requirements for the, so it sounds like there's going to be a new 311 system?
Correct.
Is one of the requirements of that 311 system, that when a ticket is closed by an agency, and a new ticket is generated with a second agency? For example, the, what often happens to council members is, a citizen will report a pothole to DPW, and DPW will go out and look at the pothole, and say, "Oh, this isn't our problem. This belongs with a different agency. It's a pothole. It's a DOT issue." We close the ticket, a new ticket number is generated, at which the citizen who made the initial complaint doesn't know that a new SRN was generated, and therefore, they're unable to track the status of it. What oftentimes angers, and I don't use that word lightly, but really angers citizens, is they've filed this 311 request, and it's been closed out, and then they drive home at night, and there's still a pothole in the middle of the street. And so, there's a missing link between when the original SRN is generated, and the SRN that actually completes the work order, and there's no interaction or communication between the systems and the citizens. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And quite frankly, that was one of the first things we were looking at when selecting a new system, to make sure that it has the capability built in to help mitigate that. Now, with that said, it's not only a technology issue. So, we've had to work collaboratively with the agencies to take a look at the processes that they have internally, and take a look at the systems that they utilize. Because we have to make sure that, on the agency side, that they're following a certain process, so that prevents that from happening, because the technology can only go but so far. I mean, there's also process between, again, what they do in their agency, and how they communicate that information back to us, or into the system. So, with that being said, with the modern system that we have, ideally, with these, with the systems that the agencies have, there'll be interfaces that will prevent that from happening, because one of the issues is, they do their work on their own siloed system, and then it doesn't interface properly with our CSR system. So, through this process, we hope to mitigate that, certainly from a technology perspective, but there's also that collaboration with the agencies, to make sure that their business processes adapt, to prevent that from happening to our citizens.
Madam Chair, I have follow-up, if you want to recycle me.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. So, in developing those requirements, and I guess reengineering the business processes that are being used, and how the operations agencies interact with the system, did you have stakeholders from each of the agencies at the table in the development of those business requirements for the new 311 system?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We have representation from all the different agencies on a committee, and in fact, they're still part of the, well, because we've already gone through the, most of the evaluation process, most of that's over with, but they've been, you know, every step of the way, they've been part of the process, they've been consulted, they've had plenty of time, I mean, from the RFP process. In fact, we actually delayed putting the RFP out on the street, just to make sure that we had input from all the stakeholders. So, they've been a part of the process the entire time, and will continue to be part of the process as we go through implementation.
So, they'll be, just to confirm, they'll be part of the testing process?
Absolutely. They have to be.
Okay. And then, Madam Chair, please interrupt me when you're...
Excuse me?
I still have more, but I don't want to...
Council President has one, then you can go right after him.
I have two. Did your budget take a cut?
Beyond the 911 being moved up?
No. We, it was flat. It remained flat, ultimately.
Well, this might be a question for Mr. Klein. We know that Cable and Communication had money for capital. Can that capital be also used for Moet? Because Moet and Office of Cable and Communication have similar functions in terms of equipment, correct? It could be.
Yes and no. From a, there are some overlaps, from an infrastructure perspective, because of the relationship that they have with Comcast.
Right.
And, but, they're still separate items, so the...
I understand. But the capital money can, I think, can, I'll let...
Yeah, Mr. President, there are strict federal rules about the use of that capital funding, and we've tried every which way to figure out how flexible that can be, but it does have to be related to, you know, the cable programming, public access cable programming.
Well, I'm quite sure, I'm quite sure the cable gets services from Moet in some kind of way, that could tie that funding with some of that capital right into that.
Yeah. If it's capital-related.
That's what I'm talking about, capital. I'm talking about capital-related.
Yeah.
So, is it possible for Moet to get some capital improvement money for the overall system through Cable and Communication?
I don't think so, but we'll look into it.
Yeah, can you look into that? Because I'm quite sure you provide a service to everybody, even Cable and Communication. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's that relationship? What it looks like?
With, I mean, actually, I have a good relation...
I'm talking about equipment-wise, and the services you provide, because I'm trying to figure out how we can give you some more capital money to upgrade the system.
It's more so of support from an infrastructure perspective. They've done, they've done a lot of modernizing of their environment, to be able to support some of the new, you know, the new programming that they have on their channel and so forth. So, but from a infrastructure perspective, to give them the platform to be able to build some of that stuff, we've assisted with providing support. And then also, certainly from an office perspective, supporting their employees, supporting their environment that they have, we've done that. But the technology specific to their business, they've handled that management.
Okay. Well, Mr. Klein, would you look into that, and get that information back to the Budget Committee, trying to figure out how we can help you out with some of your capital needs?
Thank you, sir.
And if we can bridge that gap, by showing that it's a connection with Cable and Communication might help out.
But you actually, Council President, bring up a good point. If I could say this really quickly, one of the things that we mentioned in our overview is about shared services. And so, one of the things that we're trying to do is to eliminate duplication. So, when you see agencies who are doing some of the same things that we're doing internally, we're trying to develop partnerships to mitigate that as best we can. And certainly, we've had some successes, but certainly, there are still some opportunities that are out there for that. So, one of the things we've been doing is trying to go into agencies to address that.
I think that everything that's dealing with the infrastructure at Moet, with the exception of the President's, the council, and the Controller, because you're all of the mayor's office, and we have to make a distinction there, because I wouldn't trust that. So, I'm being honest. So, if we can get other agencies, because everything should come through Moet, everything, you know, and y'all help us with a lot of things, too. But I think that all city agencies, with the exception of the two I just named, should be, all their work should be coming through Moet.
Thank you, sir.
Everything. Computers, everything.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mullen, I apologize before I stepped out in the hall to take a call, so I didn't hear you talking about all that great stuff about 311. In terms of cybersecurity, if I recall, last year, we had a discussion about that, and I know we had a major cybersecurity breach this year. Are you being appropriated enough money for cybersecurity? Do you feel like there's a shortage?
I think that there's definitely a shortage. I mean, but as far as appropriations go, we've been trying to discuss with the Budget Office, working collaboratively with them, to try to figure out, number one, what issues we can address within this fiscal year, with the funding that we have, and reallocating funds internally within the agency. You know, cybersecurity is a very tough area to catch up with. I mean, the investment required in that is very significant, but certainly, there are some things that we can do better with smaller amounts of money, and that's those, those are the discussions that we've been having with the Budget Office. We've submitted a couple of proposals after this last incident, in terms of some tools that we could utilize, that could help us monitor our environment better, and be proactive from a cybersecurity perspective. And so, that's sort of in their wheelhouse at the moment. So, but, and again, they certainly haven't told us no, but it's just a matter of trying to balance everything out.
So, do we have, do we have like active threat monitoring right now?
With limitations, yes.
Can you talk a bit about those limitations?
The, what we use, it's not as proactive as we would like. I mean, there are different, the technology today allows you, in some instances, to create a virtual environment for any type of intrusion, and then determine whether or not that intrusion is a threat to your environment or not. That level of security, we're not there yet. We have some of the more fundamental things in place, such as, you know, firewall intrusion detection. We have our, we put content, a content system on our website, the CDN on our website. So, there's a couple of different things that we've done, but again, it's, we are limited by our resources, you know, but some of the, some basics are there. You know, we're not completely wide open, and as, I know everyone keeps thinking about this latest incident that we had, you know, there isn't necessarily a tool that would have prevented this, because we're dealing with a vendor, and their website. However, there are, there's a governance that can be put in place, that, and that doesn't cost any money. But my limitation from that perspective is from an authority perspective. So, you know, if that's something that we can address, I'm happy to have that conversation, and talk more about security and governance over different areas, so that we do require annual, sometimes biannual audits, from a security perspective, of different critical systems. And by doing that, we can sometimes prevent these different types of incidents.
So, is it a matter of not having the authority over the systems of other agencies? So, Mr. Klein, is addressing, you know, the cybersecurity weaknesses that we have, which clearly led to the most recent attack, is that something that's a priority for the administration?
Sure, but I think, as you just heard, that's not what caused the most recent security breach.
No, I understand. It just highlights, highlights the issue.
Yes.
And it sounds, I don't have a terrible amount of confidence, after that last description, no offense to Mr. Mullen, clearly, he... no offense to Mr. Mullin, clearly he isn't getting the resources that he needs and that the city systems are as secure as they can be, noting that nothing can be completely secure.
Right. And as Director Mullin said, you know, we're having discussions on, I mean, at this point it's, how can we use existing funding, reallocate existing funding to ensure that we're doing the best we can in this area?
Can you talk a little bit about where we're at in terms of providing wireless access to different parts of the city? Any initiatives that Moet has going on related to that?
So the shorter answer to that is, like everything else, it requires funding. We don't have a budget to expand Wi-Fi, so what we've been doing is looking at creative opportunities and partnerships to expand our wireless footprint. To that end, we started develop, we've been developing MOUs with like the state, we're working with other agencies to try to, number one, spread out our fiber footprint because that's like the first step, that's the foundation, expanding our fiber to different areas and then from that, we've been working locally with different community, neighborhood associations and so forth, because some instances, like for example, Pemlico, the impact area, they have a small amount of funding. So we've been working with them to leverage that funding to increase, or actually to put wireless in one of their corridors. So those types of opportunities, when they come up, and unfortunately right now they're kind of few and far between, but we're trying to, again, first of all, socialize the idea of developing these partnerships and trying to establish how economically it helps the neighborhoods, how also from a, just in terms of reducing the digital divide, how beneficial these things are and getting our community to be a part of that process, I think is important. But just, you know, from what we have in our budget, there really isn't anything in our budget to address that, but it's something that we think is very important and we're trying to just pursue in more creative ways.
Okay, thank you. Before we let you go, Elliot Slanger, I think is his name, is he working with your agency?
Yes, sir.
What is his role and what does he do?
He's actually been a part of the 311 process, the upgrading of the CRM that we were discussing earlier, because he was one of the, part of the initial implementation and he's gone across the country implementing 311 or CRMs for different entities, his subject matter expertise has been leveraged in this process and he's actually helped us sort of expedite this implementation to a degree that I don't believe with our current resources we'd have been able to do. So his role again has just been as a, I'd say, program manager for the system.
So is he, is he a consultant or he's a permanent employee?
He's a consultant, he's not a city employee.
Okay, and how long is his contract?
The contract will, I think it's, we have probably about a year left, yeah.
You gotta come to the mic. You have to speak into the mic. Everybody has to hear it. Can you turn the mic on?
Oh, okay, so through implementation, so it's...
June 30th.
Okay. June 30th of next year.
Of next year?
Yes.
But some of that is not on the full-time, but need to speak into the microphone, it's on. Thank you. I'm sorry. So he is, he is contracted...
You gotta hold it up because I can't hear.
He is contracted to, through June 30th of next year when we should be 100% implemented, but a lot of that time is not full-time. It's on a, it's on a project management-type basis.
Okay. Now those kind of jobs, are they jobs that have to be bitted out or advertised or anything of that nature, or you just hire who you want?
Well, in that instance...
How was that, how was that job created?
It was created based on a need. We've been trying to do, in fact, we discussed last year about doing a, an RFP and putting our, upgrading our CRM and actually it's been about five years that we've been trying to upgrade, but we haven't had the resources internally to just continue driving things and moving things forward. So we knew that we would need a new resource to come in and assist with that process because my existing staff is just 100% dedicated to, you know, the work that they do. So that being said, an opportunity, it kind of came up organically in terms of, you know, him specifically, to fill the position, I do have the discretion of choosing individuals, you know, who are the best fit to be able to successfully complete the process through, certainly our evaluation, a lot of times we'll do a panel, it all depends, but...
So to make it easier, so you can go back to getting us into the 21st century with the limited funding that you have?
Yes, sir.
So that was an RFP?
Not for that position. It's under, he'll be coming under the, our staffing contract.
Okay. I just had some concerns about this.
Okay.
Who's next? Anybody else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, welcome back. We're going to continue with the budget hearing, with the budget hearings and we're now going to the Department of Finance. I think everybody knows everybody, we're still continuing. So Mr. Raymond, we'll turn it over to you. Folks, all your mics are live, so you don't have to get up, we have particular questions and if you want to, you can do from there, Mr. Raymond, because we're televised and if you can introduce your team.
Vice Chairman Kraft, President Young, honorable members of the committee. My name is Henry Raymond and I serve as the City's Finance Director. I'll introduce my team and show you an organizational chart representing, these are the Bureau Chiefs, so I serve as the Director, the Deputy Director is Steve Kraus, to my immediate right. We have the Bureau of Budget Management Research, to my left Andrew Klein. The Bureau of Purchases is represented by Tim Cruss and his deputy Aaron Share. Risk Management, the Bureau Chief is Doug Kerr. And for Treasury, the Bureau Chief is Janelle Rogers, again to my right. Now, according, as you see from the organizational chart, you'll see the Retirement Savings Plan, that's the new retirement plan for the city and that is under the responsibility of the Department of Finance and as Finance Director, I serve as the Chairman of that new retirement system. So that became effective July 1, 2014 and that's where all the new civilian employees go, not including fire and police, but everyone else. So in other words, the plan that we are all in, the Employees Retirement System, ERS, essentially that is closed to all new civilian hires. So the new plan is the Retirement Savings Plan and it's a, a defined contribution plan as opposed to ERS, which is a defined benefit plan. I'm going to go back one slide for the Finance Department's mission. Our mission is to provide excellent customer service to our citizens, to provide a full range of financial services to all city agencies, to collect and invest all money and funds due to the city, manage the city's debt and develop and execute sound fiscal policies and practices to protect our coveted bond rating. Now we'll go through a set of slides for each of the bureaus and then entertain any questions you may have. So the first slide here is for the Bureau of Revenue Collections. The recommended funding level for 2017 is 6.5 million, this is general funds and essentially their role is to collect all money that is due to the city. We provide a lot of technology for individuals to pay bills by phone, online, or in person and one of the important things they do is to administer the annual tax sale, which is online. I'd like to point out the, one of the performance measures for effectiveness, collection of the real, of the collection rate on the real property tax rate, it's always been between 96, 97% and we're hoping that for 17, we'll increase it to 97%. So the collection rate is good. Moving to Treasury and Debt Management, the funding level is $1 million, this is general funds, there are nine individuals in this unit. Essentially Treasury serves as the city's banking function, handles all the city's corporate cash, debt, banking services and investments. They manage our banking relationship with M&amp;T Bank and others and manages the overall debt service for the city. Administration for Finance, this is the Office of the Finance Director, so this office provides executive direction to the Finance Department and provides fiscal policy, strategy and direction to all agencies citywide, as well as the leadership for the city. The budget is 1.3 million and there are 10 individuals employed in this unit. Procurement is the next service, 17, funding level is 3.3 million and there are 34 positions for 17, which is a decrease of 2 over the present year fiscal 16. This service provides professional services for the procurement of all commodities, goods and services and support of all agencies citywide. And the metrics that are displayed are to increase the number of vendors registered in city by, by increasing the number of vendors, we can have more competitive competition for the solicitation of goods and the goal is by having more competition, we'll obtain better pricing and for the outcome, the number of bids per formal solicitation, by having more competition, hopefully we'll have more bids to assure that we're getting the best advantageous offer for the commodity, good or service that we're trying to procure. Surplus property disposal is a special fund recommended at $142,000, there's two positions in this service. And essentially they administer the proper disposition of surplus property. So when agencies have equipment they no longer need, we try to sell it to obtain some type of residual value from the marketplace. The next service is Printing Services. This is an income, excuse me, an internal service fund. For 17, the recommended funding level is 3.3 million, there's 14 individuals employed in this service and essentially this service provides comprehensive document services, printing, digital printing, preparation of reports, manuals, et cetera, for all city agencies and this will, this level of funding will maintain the current level of service. Moving to Accounts Payable, this is part of the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services. It's a general fund function, 17 recommendation is 1.1 million, there are 13 positions in this unit that remains consistent with the current fiscal year. And the Accounts Payable function is to pay all invoices from all city agencies, they receive approximately 10,000 invoices a year or 120,000 annually. The goal is to pay all invoices within a 30-day period. And you can see from the metrics how we're doing, 15 was 70%. The percentages are dependent on the agencies getting the invoices in. Moving to Payroll, payroll is also part of the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services. The funding recommendation for 17 is 3.4 million, there are 15 positions in this service which remains unchanged from the current fiscal year, excuse me. Essentially this service provides all payroll services for permanent employees, seasonal employees, summer students, weekly pay, bi-weekly pay and retirees. And with this level of funding, we'll maintain current service level. Moving to the Accounting Service, the 17 recommendation is 1.8 million, it's general The funding, excuse me, the staffing level for 17 is a request of 32 positions, which is a seven-position increase over the current year and I'll briefly discuss that. The seven positions are five accounting positions being requested for a centralized grants accounting unit and two accounting positions for the quadrennial audit process. Now, overall, for the Finance Department, the current year, there's 298 positions, 17 is 301. Now, what we're doing is we're adding these seven positions, but there are four positions that are being abolished. I mentioned previously that the Bureau of Revenue Collection has lost two positions and the Bureau of Purchases has lost two positions, 7 minus 4 is 3, 298 to 301 is 3. So it nets out to an increase of 3. Loan and Guarantee Program is recommended at half a million dollars, there's two positions, essentially they process the loans that have been set up for a long time, so they, like third-party processing of loans and it's phasing out. And it's the Loan and Guarantee Fund. Risk Management is recommended at 17 for 8.3 million, this is an internal service fund, they have 17 positions and that remains unchanged from the current year. The primary responsibility of risk management is to manage the city's workers' compensation program, procure insurance policies and the appropriate amounts to cover us for all types of unanticipated events such as flooding, property destruction, fires, et cetera. And one of the main functions in terms of risk management is trying to reduce injuries from employees, car accidents, things of that nature, doing other things to reduce injuries in the workplace. Moving to the next slide, Operating Budget Management, the 17 recommendation is 1.8 million, the 17 position request is 17. This service oversees the budget preparation for the city, for the operating budget, assists all agencies in preparing budgets, managing those budgets, forecasting revenue, managing the revenue forecast, taking the lead on the implementation of the 10-year financial plan for forecasting out 10 years. What are the implications of every... What are the implications of every, uh, major financial initiative that we undertake to determine that we're still on track with implementing our initiatives? Tax competitiveness, dealing with our infrastructure, shoring up our, uh, long-term liabilities, and eliminating our structural, uh, deficit. Property Tax Billing Integrity and Revenue Unit. The recommendation for seventeen is a million dollars. There are six individuals employed in this service. What this unit does is, uh, they deal with, uh, the State Department of Assessments and Taxation on commercial appeals. By appealing assessments, it generates more revenue for the general fund. They administer all of the city's tax credits. They've implemented, uh, automated processes to make, applying for those credits smoother. They evaluate the credits to determine that they've been calculated properly, to ensure that we're not spending more on the credits than we should be, which would have an impact of artificially reducing the general fund below the level that it should be. And the final slide, Finance Project Management. This is funded, uh, from capital funding because the Thank you. Because the maj-majority of these projects are capital in nature. It's staffed by one person. And the, the functions that are contained with this unit are building, uh, new applications for the finance department, like recently, the new personal property billing system. They're working now on consolidated billing for a real property tax system, miscellaneous billing system. You have to remember, uh, we're still on the legacy system, COBOL-based business applications from forty years ago. We have to migrate all of that to more current technology. This is what that unit does. So that's the overview. And, uh, I'm prepared to address any questions you may have.
Mr. President.
Mr. Raymond, um, back to Service Seven Ten. Is this something that Moit could do for finance?
Seven Ten? Okay, now, Service Seven Ten is the Property Tax Billing and Integrity Unit.
Does a senior program assessment analyst?
Yes. The qualifications for that classification would be master's degree in business administration, master's degree in finance, master's degree in accounting. They are not, uh, technical positions from a IT perspective. So, uh, we, m-most likely, we would not be able to attract a IT person in that classification. And that classification was, was not designed for, uh, IT support. Again, what these
Well, maybe, well, maybe Seven Eleven could.
I'm sorry?
Service Seven Eleven. I noticed that there was no funding
Right.
For this. So what happened to this?
Yeah, that unit You bear with me one second. It's, it's one position in that unit. Yeah, which is a, uh, transfer credit out of capital, and the total dollar amount that we're looking at is approximately, uh,
So basically, you moved it somewhere else.
Yeah, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
So basically, you moved it somewhere else.
Yes, for, for, for one position. And, uh, I believe that that service needs to be in finance because there has to be a very good understanding of all the finance systems, uh, the, the billing systems, how the systems tie together, because this position is evaluating software and applications to determine their feasibility for deployment for, for finance, but we're supporting citywide, i.e., citywide property tax billing system, real property billing system, miscellaneous billing system for all of the licenses and fees that the city, uh, does, and we're talking one position. We had previously looked at whether, uh, Moit would be a good home for it, but it, it was determined that, uh, the proper place was financed, since it was just one position.
Okay. If you took a ten percent across-the-board cut, where would it be?
It'd be a heart attack I'd have.
I don't want to give you I just had the action. All right, I don't, I don't have nothing else. At this moment.
Um, I think Councilman Costello is next. I don't know if he's ready yet. I'll take Councilman Kern, and then we'll come back to Councilman Costello.
Good, Mr. Vice Chair, and, um, welcome, Mr. Raymond. This is, uh, my twenty-first and last budget that I'll be dealing with. And since that, I was elected in ninety-five, we've had four budget directors of fin- four directors of finance. Phil Brown, Peggy Watson, Ed Gallagher, and I believe yourself. In comparison, we've had seven or eight police commissioners.
And also, uh, my predecessor, uh, Mr. Harry Black.
I'm sorry. The gentleman left of Cincinnati, I forgot about Harry. I'm sorry. I'm fine. It's been an honor to work for the Department of Finance over these past twenty-one years. And you as, when you were deputy and, and moving up, uh, and working with Andrew Klein, Bob Sennemead, and the folks from Purchasing, and Tim and Aaron, uh, and don't forget my, uh, my bozo friend, I always call him a bozo friend, but Mr. Kerr and Steve, the deputy, and Janice, and, um, Frank from Collections and all, all your folks are very professional, worked with them very well, and it's been an honor to serve and work with you guys. That's the good thing. Now we're going to go to the bad thing.
Well, thank you.
There's a question in there. Now we're going to go to the bad thing.
So thank you very much for your positive comments and feedback.
All right, and I'm only going to make it
It's a good or sweet
Go ahead, go ahead, Henry, I'm sorry.
To see you leave.
I'm sorry, thank you. Now, I like to use your own words against you, at least in the budget book over the years. And my favorite Service Seven Sixteen program. And I was, well, felt a bit the way I took on Bob Sennemead the other day, when we had the health department. But in your budget book, besides I pick up the dead animals, we'll get, we'll go to it another time. You said the city's contribution to Barks is one point eight-five million in fiscal two seventeen, which increased up forty-three thousand over the same timeframe, meaning from two thousand thirteen. Forty-three thousand more Barks get. So I go to, and I keep all these, Henry. I go to the two thousand thirteen budget book.
I believe that was a bestseller.
Yeah, it was. But I still have them. They've been doorstops, but they still have them. Now, forty-three thousand more for Barks since two thousand thirteen. The Department of Finance from two thousand thirteen to now is eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars more than you had in two thousand thirteen. And the point I want to make is the Barks increase from two thousand thirteen to this year is point zero percent. Department of Finance's increase from two thousand thirteen is thirteen point four percent, which is thirty-three thousand, five hundred percent higher increase than Barks had. But you've had a thirteen percent increase since two thousand thirteen. And I just want to point out, now, as we go through this budget process, I see Andrew's got a quick one for you. What do you say, Director? What did Mr. Klein just tell you?
I'll let you finish your point, and then
My point is, finance department compared to Barks' increase in last four years budget, finance had a thirty-three thousand, five hundred percent increase, more than Barks got. And now this year, Barks is being cut. Now, we're going to pick up the dead animals? And here's Bob Sennemead now, and I felt bad about taking you on during the budget hearing for health, Bob, I just mentioned that. So is finance going to pick up the dead animals if that cut stays forward with the Barks? With the, the animal services? Who's going to pick up the dead animals? Well, finance can't do it, police can't do it, I already talked to Kevin Davis.
So let me address that. Barks is a nonprofit, they have the ability to fundraise.
I understand that.
Second, for the finance department, the finance department's budget has increased because we're providing citywide services to all city agencies, and not only city agencies, also to the public.
Okay.
And if you look over that period of
Which also Animal Services does. Animal Services provides a lot of services to the public, not just Barks, Animal Services, Animal Cruelty Investigations.
I would take the position that maintaining the integrity of the city's finances is more important than the funding for, for Barks.
I will grant you that, but will finance have the ability to pick up the dead animals?
No, but the animals decay over a certain period of time.
So they're just going to stay on the streets. All right. All right, we'll talk some more about that as we move forward. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Councilman Costello.
Madam Chair, I, I have a bunch of questions. It's about twenty-five, but they're all extremely quick.
Let me take Councilwoman Middleton, and then we'll come back to you.
Quickly, you probably know what I'm going to address, I guess, a little bit and get some feedback. You know, we had that breach in, I guess, security with, um, employees, in which I happened to be a victim, and still, uh, worst experience ever happened in my life, and still going through my third or fourth round of credit cards within three months. So, um, contracting out government is just, um, this is just a, a clear sign of, that it creates a mess. And, um, it's uncalled for, and, you know, personally, someone it, it just, you know, clearly points to, in my eyes, that, um, how vulnerable we are, and as far as I know, we're the only government that this has happened to in the state of Maryland. Here we go again with Baltimore City. So, um, and it's costing money now that you, you know, have to do things to try to correct that. So I, I think it would be good to give an update on, I don't know if you have any cost right now of what it's costing to correct that. Is there any discussion of getting rid of this particular company? Of proof that this has happened to? Um, I'm going to be personally following this, just because I don't want this to ever happen to a government, government employee again. And, um, particularly since I am an elected official as well. And, um, I just need your comments on the whole situation and how the city is moving forward to correct this, and just add this on. You know, I'm hoping that you will take control and do this whole thing yourself. You know, with the city, I think it's, um, that, that's a big safety thing right there. So, your comments.
Uh, Councilwoman Middleton, I would agree that, uh, the issue regarding the, uh, data was unfortunate. We're not characterizing it as a breach, because my understanding at this point is we still don't understand or have full knowledge of exactly what occurred. My comments will be brief, because this issue is still under investigation, and we don't want to share too much. What we can do is prepare a, uh, a private briefing document for you, but to address what I can address right now is that, uh, we are capturing the cost of what this is going to cost for the services that we've had to do to try to, uh, ensure that, uh, employees have their, uh, credit protected. So we have issued a contract for credit protection. We can provide the cost of that. Moit is looking at, uh, various software for, for cybersecurity to assist us. Moit has provided, uh, cost estimates, uh, to me for that cost, that are anywhere from several hundred thousand upwards to, uh, six, seven hundred thousand. In terms of, uh, bringing this function back in-house, uh, we will be looking at that once we truly determine what the cause of this, uh, incident was, to determine. And we would have to do a cost analysis, because the reason we outsourced was to achieve savings. Bringing the function back in-house, we would have to do the cost-benefit analysis to determine what are the long-term costs associated with the employer's healthcare, pension costs. But to address your concern, we understand that we may need to do this, because having an issue like this, uh, is unacceptable. And as I said, we'll have more, uh, in a private brief, briefing document for you. Once the final resol- the law enforcement authorities are looking into this. So once we have, uh, finalization of that, we'll have more information to share.
I just, I guess, want to add, um, my longevity of, uh, marriage played a key role in helping me out to somewhat, because that was the red flag that the IRS saw. You know, I've been married for thirty-six years and jointly filed taxes for that long, and when this came about, it was evidently this person didn't know that, and, uh, tried to do what they tried to do individually, and so, um, that was a, a savings grace, so, uh, sometimes it's good to be married for a long time. I just thought I threw that in.
All right, did you, are you watching Glenn? Did you hear that? Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Director Raymond, can we go through the, the status of the quadrennial audits?
Yes.
Thank you. I assume Mr. Klein gave you my list.
I'm sorry?
As a joke with Mr. Klein.
Okay, so a high-level overview for, uh, the quadrennial agency audit process, Councilman Costello. The rundown would be as follows. As it relates to, uh, I'll break it down by financial audits versus, uh, the performance audits. So, is everyone is the
And let me ask you this, um, Mr. Raymond. I know that, um, you're going to provide this, but if you could provide this also in writing to the committee, okay?
Yes.
All right, that way everybody isn't going to be rushing to try to copy everything there.
Right, we'll, we'll provide a overview.
Okay, thank you.
So there are thirteen principal agencies, uh, that undergo both a financial audit and a performance audit, to comply with the quadrennial agency audit, uh, law. In terms of, uh, the financial audits, one of the audits has been completed and, uh, approved by the Board of Estimates. An additional two are in the final stages of completion, and will be going to the board soon. Another eight are in progress, so they're all underway. And at this point, we believe they will all be completed, uh, prior to the end of this administration. So, uh, eleven of the twelve are either done or underway. As I said, there's thirteen. There's one that did not require a financial audit, which is, uh, the Baltimore Development Corporation. They have independent financial audits performed, and the Department of Audits has reviewed those independent, uh, audits performed by CPA firms, and have concurred that there's not a need to reperform those audits. So, uh, so they're done. Now, in terms of the performance audits, two of the performance audits are completed.
Mr. Raymond, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So you said one is done, two are almost done, in progress, BDC- Mr. Raymond, I'm sorry. So you said one is done, two are almost done, BDC makes twelve, what's the thirteenth? I'm sorry if I missed that or I got your numbers mixed up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, nine are in progress. I said eight, nine are in progress. That makes twelve. The thirteenth one is BDC.
Apologize for the interruption. Thank you.
It was a test. Now, in terms of performance audits, uh, two were completed, two were near completion. Eight are in progress and one is pending. That's, uh, BDC. That, that one has not begun yet. Now, the Department of Audits will be doing the BDC one. Uh, right now, audits is working on the audits for, uh, HR and DPW. So as soon as they're completed, then they'll shift their attention to BDC. And again, uh, we're confident that all of the performance audits will be completed, uh, prior to the end of the administration. And what I can do is, uh, as Councilman Kraft requested, provide a document that summarizes for each agency who the auditor is and what is the present status for both the, uh, financial audit, the performance audit, including what I shared with you, uh, which ones are completed, which ones are near complete. And when I say near complete, in the next two to three weeks, they could be in a situation where the auditors have completed the financial audit. It's under review by the agency pending, uh, their comments. So, uh, it'll, it'll have that level of, of detail and, and we can provide that.
Okay, and just to confirm, the ones that the city auditor is, is working on or has completed are the, um...
Department of Finance?
Finance, financial, performance for Bureau of Revenue Collections, Risk Management and City Buy, all within Finance. Performance and financial for DPW.
Correct.
Performance and financial for DHR, Department of Human Resources, and just performance for BDC.
Correct. Now also, uh, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but Department of Human Resources. Did you, you said that one?
DHR, yes.
Okay, you're right.
Mm-hmm. So, we're on track to complete all of them by December second?
Yes, by the end of the administration.
That's a great story. We should be proud of that.
Well, we are. It's been very difficult, uh, because as I've said to this body on previous occasions, uh, there was no additional staffing to accomplish this. Uh, this has been a manual process because, uh, our accounting system is not designed to prepare financial statements at the agency level. There's no other jurisdiction in the state that has to do this. And when the audits are completed, the council is really gonna have to decide, are these financial audits really telling us what we need to know? Uh, what Finance is looking at is another way of doing the financial audits that will generate what we believe would be more meaningful information. As you'll recall, when we were, uh, debating this legislation, the real, the spirit of what was intended was, are agencies spending what they're supposed to spend? Are they spending it on what they're supposed to be spending it on? Are they underspending? Are they overspending? Are they reallocating and doing things that they shouldn't be doing based on what was appropriated? You're not gonna tell that from the financial audit. What the financial audit is going to tell you is, are the records performed in accordance with GAAP, yes or no, qualified or unqualified? To date, all of the financial audits, excuse me, all of the financial statements from the audits are unqualified opinions. It doesn't tell you, did they spend what they were supposed to spend on contractual services? Did they reallocate, et cetera? So at some point, uh, I'll be having discussion with the council on perhaps a strategic, uh, shift that is still compliant with GAAP and GAGAS in order to generate financial statements that we believe would be more meaningful to the council and more meaningful to the public in determining how were the dollars spent? Were they spent on what they were supposed to be spent on, et cetera? And, uh, I'll have more information on that, uh, in the next month or two.
Okay, so that makes all the sense in the world. So the, there's a way to, there's a way to audit the agency expenditures without doing a full, full, all-out-blown GAGAS compliant audit that still gets at the heart of what most taxpayers are really interested in, which is how is their money being spent, right?
Yes, and it would still be compliant with, uh, GAAP and GAGAS.
And it still would be compliant with GAGAS?
Yes.
Alright.
You have more?
I think I'm good. Thank you. Oh, oh, one last thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Can we get everything updated on the website, uh, that, that you guys created at my request? Both the, the timeline and the, the scope for each of the performance audits, uh, just so we can get that information out to the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Raymond, you know, we're looking for revenue. Um, where at in this presentation, um, I'm looking at surplus property, but I don't know whether that's where it should be at. Where, um, the city have sold properties or are in the process of selling properties. Um, do you know how many, um, properties are, uh, being sold and what the price tag is? And, um, how much money would that generate? Because we do know that some buildings are being sold, some are being bought. You know, uh, we can delay buying stuff with all the properties that the city have laying around. We can delay buying some properties. Because I know on the Board of Estimate tomorrow, um, we are being asked to approve, I think it's three million dollars to buy a piece of land to consolidate, um, a city agency.
Okay.
When we have land.
I understand your, your question, Mr. President. I will address it briefly and I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Cruss, uh, to also address it. This surplus property is like equipment from agencies?
No, I was just asking.
Which is different.
I was just asking where would we find that in the budget where we sell property? And how much money is in that, um, that account? And that's what I'm talking about. I didn't know whether, I, I just looked at surplus property because I was trying to figure in my mind, where is it in Finance that where this money goes?
Understood.
And how much is in it from the sale of properties? Because we sell property all the time.
Proceeds from, uh, the sale of real property goes into a capital account and we will provide you, uh, a spreadsheet with that information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Thanks, Andrew. Please do.
Councilman Costello?
Mr. Raymond, earlier in your presentation, you were talking about, um, the shift in positions and the, the net increase of three positions. And two of those positions are dedicated, uh, to tasks associated with the quadrennial audits.
Yes.
Um, under what you're preparing to propose with respect to modifying how the, the financial audits are performed, would the need for those two positions go away?
No, but, but this is what I have done. Uh, so I, I said it again, but I'm, I'm gonna say it again just so that, uh, we understand it. In the current year, there's two-hundred-and-ninety-eight positions. For seventeen, it's a net increase of three. What I was proposing was, uh, seven additional positions offset by the abolishment for four for that net increase of three. So the seven that we're gonna focus on right now, five were originally for, uh, centralized grants unit and two for quadrennial agency audit. The proposal is that instead of five, we would only fund three for centralized grants accounting. For quadrennial agency audits, we still need two because right now I have zero. Because when the quad audit legislation was passed, there were no positions dedicated to support that function. So, part of the delay has been because of the lack of staff. So, to ensure going forward that we meet all of the timelines in a better, more reasonable manner, we're requesting the two positions for quad audits. For centralized grants accounting unit, the request was for five. We're only going to fund three.
Okay.
So we're going to eliminate the funding for two of those five positions.
Okay, so I think I asked the question the wrong way. I'm, I'm sorry. A minute ago, not on the staffing, but on the audits, we had just talked about this concept that we've been talking about, about a different way to do the, the financial audits. If that were to be realized, is there still the need for those two positions you just discussed?
Yes, because right now, I have a contractual employee that's doing it, part-time each week. And that contractual employee is a retiree. If he gets sick, decides to, uh, go to Vegas, hang out with the grandkids, then, then we have nobody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Raymond, uh, Service 707, Risk Management. So, how many, um, claims, and this has workers' comp in it also, right?
Yeah.
So how many claims are we paying out per year? And what is the average value of the claim?
Uh, I have the Bureau Chief Doug Kerr here and, uh, I'll defer to him. And if we don't have the information, we'll follow up with it.
The, um, when I look at payments for a, a given year and we give a total, it includes payments on claims from any year, not only the current year, but if we, if there's a case that is open from five years ago, but we made a payment on that case during the fiscal year, we show that. So, last fiscal year, we paid about fifty-three million dollars in workers' compensation benefits. Uh, and as I said, it goes back from whenever that claim-
So, so if a person had, you know, um, permanent partial or temporary partial, and they're getting a payment in a particular fiscal year or whatever the amount of that payment is, is part of that fifty-three million?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And what is the average award?
The average is, um, I'm gonna say it's between about seven and nine thousand dollars. Couple of years ago, I don't know if you heard about the pink book that was published where they calculated, uh, the number of claims that the city filed and, and the dollars spent. Uh, the average, so just doing the average of that came to about ten thousand dollars, which was the lowest municipality in the state as well as the third lowest employer. The two that, that did better than us did not have police and fire, which, as you know, get paid at a higher rate than everybody else.
Right, and they also, and they also have other additional claims that they can make, which are not available to other employees.
Under the presumption where, you know, certain cancers and, uh, other diseases that-
PTSD.
Correct, that don't apply to other agencies.
I know that when the IG was here, um, he was talking about the investigations that they've been conducting into, um, abuse, workers' comp abuse in particular, in both the fire service and the police department. Um, and led us to believe that they had come across a good number of cases there. Is, um, is the IG or are you internally conducting your own investigations of employees other than police and fire?
Absolutely. Uh, we, we're looking at it across the board. Um, you know, we can't, we have a, a hotline if somebody wants to call and, and let us know that, you know, I can't believe that John is filing a workers' comp claim. I played against his softball team last night, you know, that type of situation. So, we will spend the money and do surveillance to see if there are any opportunities. Um, we, you know, from the very beginning, we'll look at the case, determine, does it, you know, meet the compensability, uh, aspect? But what usually happens is something along the lines, while the claim is going on, something may happen where the person says, you know, I can't go back to work, can't lift my arm, and the injury's gone on too much. We might do surveillance, find out that he's cleaning his gutters at home and use that. We use that information to shut down the workers' compensation claim so we don't pay any more benefits. And that's when we work hand-in-hand with the IG's office and say, "Look, this person's doing this activity at home and trying to get away with getting benefits under workers' comp."
Well, we had DPW in here talking about the new trash cans. And, you know, the new trash cans are set up so that you can bring the trash can, it picks it up, it lifts it. So, they were talking about that. And then they were talking about how the trash, um, people are actually leaning over into the cans and pulling out the trash bags. The people are like wrapping their trash in, during the week, they might get, you know, three or four during that, whenever, three or four trash bags and throwing them into these, what are they, ninety-six gallon?
Right, I think.
Ninety-six gallon things. It would seem to me that an employee would be much more likely to hurt themselves leaning over into these trash cans. These things are, I mean, I don't know if you've got one or seen them yet, but, you know, you gotta like get off your feet to lean over in them and pull these things out. So if there's any weight to it, you're leaning over. You know, they're not emptying these cans the way the cans have been designed to be emptied to avoid these workers' comp claims. So, you know, we had a little bit of discussion that, when that's here, but I think there should be a serious, um, educational plan undertaken with DPW. And I also think there should be put, something should be put out there basically saying, "These new cans are set up this way. And if you all don't empty them this way, then that's negligence on your part. And we're not gonna pay a workers' comp claim if you are climbing over into the trash can to empty it rather than having, hooking the can up and having it emptied the way it's supposed to be emptied." Because one of the reasons for bringing these new cans in is to reduce the number of workers' comp claims.
Correct.
Okay, so can you guys follow up on that?
Absolutely. Now, that makes, that makes sense. And, you know, one of the concerns that I've, prior to that, in, in the trash cans, um, it's a big issue, especially in the wintertime, is when water gets into the container, it usually drops to the bottom and then freezes. So if they don't rock the container to feel the weight before they quickly go to pick it up, that's how they get hurt. So when they instituted the new container, I was thinking, this is great. All they gotta do is roll it out. It lifts it up, it dumps it. But, um, this is the first I heard where they're actually reaching in to get it, but we'll look into that.
Yeah, and that was actually described, you know, by DPW when they were here talking about the trash cans. So, um, so anyway, you know, my thing is, it's not necessarily that I don't want to pay the claims. You know, I don't want the people getting hurt.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and as I said, it's, it's a lot easier to get hurt climbing over the can, you know, picking the thing out than it is actually picking can up. So, anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, Finance will address this with, uh, the administration.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. President?
Yeah, I have one final, um, thing to say. Um, you know, we go through this budget, um, process, exercise, I call it, of, um, I got you or I don't have you, um, every year. Where we play with, um, whether we're gonna fund children's priorities or whether we're gonna fund, um, different things that our citizens want. So I'm hoping with this new administration that we can be more engaged in the budget process with the Finance Department, where when we present a budget, we'll all be on the same page and we can get the budget done without all of this craziness that goes on in negotiating for stuff that, there should be no negotiation. Because if we can find, uh, money- Because if we can find money, if we can find $480 million for the police, then there's no problem. But yet, when we come and ask for 4.2 for after-school programs and the little bit of money for the two childcare centers in Waverly, and I forgot where the other one at, and...
Northwood.
Northwood.
And the Experience Corp., and you know what I'm talking about. We shouldn't have to come here and have this exercise every year. Because I remember, and I don't know whether the chair was there or who was there, when the mayor said to us, we'll be running in 2016. And we're not gonna have a fight over the budget, we're gonna have a clean budget. Do anybody remember that? You know, we're gonna have a clean budget, there will be no fighting. Since she's not running, we're fighting over a budget. And we shouldn't have to do that. If she said that money was gonna be there for this year, when we all was gonna be running, including herself, then what happened? So I'm hoping as we go with this new administration that we'll be sitting down on the front end and not on the back end of this budget. Because I'm just hoping that the new mayor feel the way I feel, that we're gonna be cooperative and we're gonna work together and stop this, I got you. You know, because it's not about that. It's about moving this city forward, about all of the city leaders working together for common good. And that's making sure that services are delivered to our residents and that we are all moving to move this city forward. I mean, we all have, we're all elected by the same people. You know, and this exercise that we have year in and year out, which I'm getting sick of, I don't know why, sometime we come here and go through this exercise. Because it's, in my opinion, is a farce. You know, no disrespect to anybody, but this is my personal opinion. We should not have to come in here, year in and year out, and fight over things that... We have priorities too as a council. It ain't just about the administration. You wouldn't have the bond rating that you have if this body did not work along with the administration. Because I get sick and tired of hearing, I did this, I did this, my, our bond rating that I have. No, it's a we. And as we move forward with the new administration, it should be we and us, not I. Because that's what kills this city, when people have their own personal agendas and it's all about them and not about we and us. So I'm hoping as we move forward with the new administration, we can have better cooperation and dialogue and that the council can be at the front end of the budget when we're making decisions on what's being cut and what's not. Because we're tired of taking the blame for cuts that we have nothing to do with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilwoman Middleton?
I just wanna, I concur with you, but I do want to add, Mr. Raymond has, you know, to be in charge of especially money, per se. You have been a wonderful leader and working through all this. And, you know, you stand for your department and they follow you. And you have been a gentleman to the council. As far as I can see, you've always been accessible. And you have always tried to just show respect personally. I just want to give that to you, you know, that kudos to you because it is a, you hold a very stressful job. So my hat's off, the hat's off to you.
Thank you very much. I guess my final comment would be, the Finance Department looks forward to continuing a very open and cooperative dialogue with the council as we move forward.
And Mr. Raymond, on behalf of the Budget and Taxation Committee, I just want to say this. It is important for the voters to know and the citizens as a whole to know that the city council does not develop the budget, as you well know.
Correct.
The budget is presented to us, and we cannot add to the budget. And the cuts that have been made to date to any program are cuts that have been presented to us. They are not cuts that we have made. So whether it are the cuts to Barks, or the cuts to Northwood, or Waverly, or the children's programs or whatever, the city council has not made any of those cuts. They were presented to us by the...
The administration and ultimately by me as Finance Director, that's correct.
Correct. And so, you know, and we don't have any ability, as you well know, to add that money back in or to move the money from somewhere else to cover what the administration has decided to cut. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the only way that we can do anything about this budget is to have good-faith negotiations, as was mentioned by the President, okay? And, you know, it takes everyone to have a good-faith negotiation. And we don't feel that that's happening. So, you know, I hope that, you know, we've had time to go yet. But we can't move forward if every time there's a little bit of difficulty, somebody's pointing their finger and saying, you know, you guys are doing something because, you know, we don't have the authority, we didn't cut the budget. We didn't cut these areas. And we can't move the money around, and we can't add the money. So we're stuck. You know, there's only one person that can do all that, and that's the mayor.
Right.
So, you know, we're willing to work on this. But, you know, we have, we can't do it on our own, okay?
Understood.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the Budget and Taxation...
One more point. Yeah, one more point. I can truthfully say that the chair lady, Helen Holton, she's not here. And I have been working diligently with Mr. Raymond, who have worked with us in earnest and honestly. And, you know, when it gets downstairs to the second floor, instead of paying attention to what her budget, I mean, her Finance Director's saying, she calls her staff together and they sharpen their pencils, and then they go to work. So we worked with Mr. Henry Raymond on some proposals, how we can fill the gap and all this stuff. But it was all in futility. Because once he went downstairs to present it, that's where it got cut. And no, we're not doing that because it's, I'll leave it at that. But you know it's personal.
Exactly.
I'd like to make one final comment on this.
Yes, sir.
And my remarks will be very brief. Until we get this budget nailed down, I give the citizens of the city and the council my word that we will continue to dialogue, negotiate with the city council in open and a transparent manner to see if we can come out with the best outcome possible as it relates to this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Ladies and gentlemen, the Budget and Taxation Committee will stand in recess. We will reconvene approximately 5:30 for Taxpayers Night. Thank you.